You know, these sort of periodic assessments we do of children's growth throughout the year, they do it in the fall, winter and spring, so they can kind of see how kids are progressing. They show that we're actually losing ground. And for me, as an early childhood educator, I know that those literacy skills are foundational to all other learning and like success in life. And we have a very real problem in Minneapolis Public School and a really big part of that is the curriculum we're using. And so I am a fierce advocate for getting in that now state mandated evidence-based curriculum for teachers.
I thought you were gonna say your kids were excited to to know that you're on the Wedge Live podcast. Like, how old are your kids? You can't be that old to have thirty-year-old children who are excited about Wedge Live.
No, no, they are deeply immersed in the world of YouTube right now. And when I told them I was gonna be on a podcast tonight and I needed our office space to, you know, clear the room, this is my studio for tonight, they're like, are you getting paid? Whole experience ends up with mommy making much money at all, so.
Yeah, wait until they hear about what you get paid if you get on the school board. Really disappointed, mommy, we're never going on vacation again. Why does everyone in the city hate you, mommy?
Pretty much, pretty much. But yeah, they're third and fifth graders. And so if anything, I hope what they remember from this time is that they saw their mom out doing the thing, right? Like, it is, I think, at every level, a grind and a sacrifice for the people behind the candidate. So I, you know, little shout out to my family.
It really is. And District Six, I say this about all the, both the at-large race that I'm talking to candidates for and District Six, very lucky to even have a choice this year because that is not always the case.
Yeah, here, here.
Uh, so this is the Wedge Live podcast. I'm your host, John Edwards. Laura, I'm sorry, you're the the fourth and I'm terribly exhausted by talking to school board candidates. Laura Bergman is an early childhood educator and MPS parent who is running for Minneapolis School Board in District Six. Find it hard to be interesting, the fourth go-round, you know, how you've kinda, I'm trying to keep the conversations fresh, but I may, this is all on you to keep this exciting and fun and high energy.
I'm here for it. And four is my favorite number, so I didn't even know I was the last of them. But yeah, I'll bring the energy. I'm getting really good at hearing myself repeat the same thing over and over again.
Just lay lay into me with your talking points. Uh, we we met at Nicolet Open Streets. It was the typical candidate thing where a volunteer flags you down and you're like, I don't, I don't wanna do this. I do not want a part of this. So congratulations to that volunteer, whoever that was, for wrangling me. I'm not easy to wrangle into those things. And then you stepped up. You're like, I know, I know who this guy is.
You were even on a bike. You you could have just zoomed right past, so thanks for stopping.
It's true, it's true. But then then you stepped in, you're like, I'm not, I know who this person is. I need to step in and make sure they get the straight story.
I, we, we run a campaign that is very much like people-centered. And so when I have volunteers out there, it's like, they've got my back and I've got their back, right? And so foundational to, for me in the last ten months has been getting to meet as many people as possible and engage them in this conversation. So, yeah, I think the question was, you were unsure if you lived in District Six. And I was like, the wedge isn't in District Six. I know you, you're the Wedge Live guy. So, yeah, but I didn't even have us on for for interviews. So that was, that was very exciting to get your email.
Yeah, it was kind of a last-minute thing. I I never wanna get involved because school board issues, it's one of those things, I don't know enough to really wanna take on the risk of having people hate me because I said the wrong thing about it. Like, you have to be really sure.
That's part of the problem, though, right? That's part of the problem. We have so many people, you know, we need to engage as many people as possible in what's happening with our schools, whether or not you have kids in them, because we really are approaching some really, really hard challenges. And I I believe that we need as many people as possible understanding this moment that we're in so that we have the most consensus and community buy-in with how we approach those challenges. And no doubt, school board finance in particular is very complex. And one of the reasons I feel called to this moment is not everyone's interested in tending to board meetings and doing all the behind-the-scenes like work and research and making all the connections. And I really am, like, I'm one of those folks that can't wait to watch the recording of the four-hour board meeting. Um, I think they're fascinating and they're important. But I totally understand why they are inaccessible to so many people. And that's actually a really central part of my platform is we need to demystify this. We need to make it more accessible. It's one thing to, you know, comply with open meeting law, and it's another thing to actually be accessible and out in the community and breaking this down into bite-sized pieces that people can wrap their heads around. So, I hear you and, you know, I think we all have our things. I can't imagine hosting a podcast like you do. So, you know, we all have our places.
Yeah, I I do impressive things, too.
Exactly. Can't do it all.
And so this is fresh in my mind because I just finished talking to Kim Ellison, who's running at large. She made it sound like, uh, the administration, the school board administration is kind of dysfunctional. Like, that is the, that is what, I don't know if that's the message she was trying to convey to me, but like, that's the message I took. We talked about the comprehensive district design and how like, they didn't really get data back. Like, it was, uh, from Kim Ellison's point of view, the intention was to do it, see what works, get some data returned to them about how it worked. And I was astonished here, like, they just didn't get that data back? That sounds incredibly dysfunctional. And then on the budget, I'm thinking, as long as I've lived in Minneapolis, twelve years or so, it's felt like budgeting crisis, school, school budgets in crisis. And like, are we not looking, that feels like a governance dysfunction problem that we're not looking far enough to head ahead, to head off these problems before it becomes a real big crisis. And so you say you watch these meetings, you're a nerd about it. Am I getting the right impression about things?
Yeah, um, I could say so many things. Uh, just to clarify, school board administration, are you referring to the way the board?
Referring to staff.
The district, okay, yeah.
You can answer it from either perspective, however you see it, but like, that's, that's how I took it from Ellison that, uh.
I think it's really important to point out that school board had someone just at a meet and greet the other day describe it as, we have a citizen board. And so therefore, the administration and their staff have a lot of power because they are paid to do that forty hours a week plus, right? And as a board director, we're not paid like it's a full-time job. And a lot of times, people still need to work full-time jobs to make that, make ends meet. And so it is absolutely a role that could be a full-time job if you're really doing all your due diligence and you're doing all the engagement and visiting schools during the day and things like that. And and so, um, I think one of the challenges of the school board is getting people in there that are willing to do that hard work. And when necessary, push back on our administration when, when the product that they're delivering isn't good enough, right? I feel like I've watched so many board meetings where the the district administration, and I I, I assume good intentions of everyone, right? Like, the people who work in those positions at Davis Center often have kind of made their way up the ranks, if that's the way we wanna talk about it. I think the classroom is the best place to be. But some people find their ways to, um, the district office, but they started as teachers or principals. And I do believe they have good intentions, but there is something to be said about losing track of what it's like to have boots on the ground. And instead of, you know, board directors, you know, having time during their, um, you know, their back and forth with presentations from the staff, instead of asking questions, they say, thank you, I know you put in a lot of time on this, thank you for your time. And I'm like, no, that's not your job. Your job is to like, get the data, be persistent, ask the hard questions, pose the new idea, right? And so I think that ebbs and flows every time we have an election, because that historical memory is important. And district staff changes, just, you know, just like the board staff does. We have a new superintendent right now, right? She has a big learning curve and you know, what we definitely wanna do is have sort of across the board, literally the school board, but also that we are on the same page as administration, as a school board, as our union leadership, right? Like, we all represent this district. And so if we aren't cohesive and and honoring the expertise that we all bring and the role that we all have, it is gonna end up feeling and being dysfunctional. I don't think that's usually the goal, right? We all wanna try and do the best job we can, but, um, there has been a lack of cohesion, I'll say, for sure, as I've watched.
Does it need to be a full-time job? Like, I understand the inclination to want to trust the experts. You wanna trust staff. Like, I mean, everybody's trying to be a public servant and do the best that they can. Does the school board need to be a full-time job so that people have the confidence and the time to like, de- develop some confidence to challenge staff and say, maybe, maybe this isn't right, maybe I shouldn't trust you?
You know, I am not gonna be the first person to advocate that board directors get paid full-time salaries in the midst of a budget crisis. I do think that, you know, system-wide, like across our country, you know, we, we have as much money invested in education in this country as we do our defense budget. I I heard this in my ed finance program I'm in, you know, that you consider all the local taxes and all the, all the different funding streams schools get, right? And yet, the people charged with those billions of dollars and sort of stewarding them are these elected more or less volunteer school boards. And so I don't pose myself to be any expert, um, as a, as a board director, right? Like, I think we see the same issues when we have, um, lifetime politicians, right? Like, I understand why we need to keep, keep it kind of flowing with new ideas and new perspectives. So it's kind of a balance, right? Like, and that's why I think, like you started out saying, we are fortunate that we have in my race, two really qualified people with, you know, the resumes to do a good job. And so, that's just not always the case. And I, I don't know the solution to that, other than maybe it just a bigger shift towards demystifying what the school board does and getting more people engaged. I know that, um, Shayla's story to running for school board was very much about her experience in a classroom and thinking, how can I use my professional expertise to help the schools, right? And then she found out there was an election and an open seat and, you know, so I think that right now, it is very much based on chance of who is in the right space in their life to run for a role such as school board. And it's just another reason why I also feel very called to this particular seat in this particular moment. I have said since the beginning, I, I never thought I'd be running for elected office. And I have no future political aspirations. My heart lies in the classroom and sort of like, behind-the-scenes work. But it really was this moment that I felt the community, you know, we needed to elevate this conversation and bring it out to the community.
School board filled the one hundred and ten million dollar budget gap this year with fifty-five, and correct my numbers if they're wrong, with fifty-five million in one-time funds. We've also got the twenty million dollar ballot question that would increase the tax levy and send that money to the school board. But that's only gonna fill a fraction of whatever the number is, the giant massive budget hole for next year. And so, uh, how do you close that gap? You, you must give me all the answers.
You know what? Here's what I will say. I alone don't have all the answers. I think that's the work of good governance is, you know, like you were saying, asking for the data, being relentless about getting those answers before we make decisions. And that's where it's critical that the board understands that we direct the work of the superintendent. It is her job to execute and use her team and her expertise. But we need to be really clear about what our expectations are before she starts putting together next year's budget. And you know, the finance committee meetings are, they're not recorded and livestreamed. So the only way to get up-to-date, you know, live answers about the finances is to attend meetings. And so when I went to the last board meeting and they shared the pro forma, which is sort of a, it's a tool, it's not a budget document, but it's a tool that the board can use to sort of plan for, you know, how do we avoid worst-case scenario here if we don't change anything? That showed that we're projected to have another eighty-five million dollar deficit to to close. And you're right, we don't have that fifty-five million dollars we used this past time. The twenty million dollars that we're asking taxpayers to, um, approve, which vote yes, because it's only, you know, depriving our schools of money isn't gonna help either. So we, we absolutely, that's a critical part of the of the plan right now to deal with our budget and our financial, um, challenges. But the thing that I keep thinking about is if we are able to close that eighty-five million dollar gap, that is to maintain the system as it is right now. And what we have right now is not a thriving system. It's not a system where we have enough to pay teachers competitive wages in contract negotiations. It's, you know, not enough to be moving the needle on our student outcomes. It's not enough to invest in programs that will hopefully draw families back to Minneapolis Public Schools, like more dual-language programming or early childhood. Every year, we are cutting, cutting, cutting. And, you know, we're down to the bare bones in so many of our schools. So we don't need to maintain the system. We truly need to rebuild it. And how we approach this next budget, I think, is gonna have real long-term implications for, you know, our ability to do that. At the risk of doing nothing and continuing to lose families because we're not meeting their needs.
You're not streaming the finance, uh, committee meetings? Like, that is the issue with the schools, uh, for as far back as I can remember. And they're not recorded and made accessible to the public. Uh, how, are, do they take place in the same room as normal? So the cameras are there?
Yeah, the cameras are there. Um, you know, I'm sure that would, that would be a draw on our resources, right? Because we'd wanna hire interpreters, we'd wanna, you know, have all the pieces in place, just like we do for the other meetings. But that financial piece, again, it's, it's the most complicated part of the job of the school board. And we, we don't do a good job of bringing the community along on how we got to this moment, you know? And again, just saying it's buried in the board materials on our very un-user-friendly interface on the school, um, district's website is not truly accessible to people. And so anything we can do to, to kind of shine light on that and not hide, right? Like, it is true that this country from the very top underfunds education. And that is, that has been our legacy since forever as a country. And then we have, you know, the underfunded mandates of special education and English language learners that lies at the state. And when they don't fully fund those things, then it falls on districts like Minneapolis to take funds from our general funds. And so, you know, it's, it's taken me years to kind of get a handle on how this all kind of plays together. But it started with questions. It started as a parent during the teacher's strike, wanting to do everything I could to support the teachers online and and advocate for the things they wanted. And, you know, I quickly was like, well, how does our district get money? Oh, the state? Oh, they're, you know, underfunding us? Oh, we slashed funding twenty years ago and haven't been able to recover? You know, like, since then, like, it's, there is, there are reasons that I think are very easy for the public to understand, but we have to say it over and over again, if anything I've learned in my campaign, right? You can say something once, but people need to hear it over and over again for it to really sink in and and have people wrap their minds around what you're talking about. So I think that's on us as a board. That's absolutely within our powers to to make an effort towards better transparency with our community by figuring out how to livestream those, those meetings.
Politics is the art of being annoyingly repetitive. So the line, here's the line against you, Laura. Because I asked for people to submit questions, and you you know where I'm going with this, because it's.
I have a guess.
Do you wanna guess?
I'm, I'm assuming it's some connection with charter schools or school vouchers or ed forum groups.
I was gonna, the school closure thing, I'm probably not deep enough in to know what people are, the whisper campaigns about, uh, charter school stuff, but like, people really wanna know, and the framing is, uh, Laura is the person who's definitely gonna close schools. Greta is the person who is definitely not gonna close schools. I talked to Greta and I couldn't get her to agree to that framing. And so it makes me doubt that that actually is the framing. Respond to that framing that people are, uh, talking about.
Yeah, I do think that, um, my approach to the budget differs from Greta's in terms of, I think we have the same goal. We want Minneapolis Public Schools to thrive. It's how we get there that differs. And again, in this ed finance program I'm doing, the sort of director of the program says, it is totally reasonable for, um, very smart, thoughtful people to land on different answers to the same challenge, right? And so I would say that as I've looked at things like our declining enrollment over the past twenty years, um, and hearing from people on the campaign trail about they're worried that Minneapolis Public Schools is headed towards things like statutory operating debt and state takeover. And so they're preemptively leaving because the board isn't taking action to prevent that from happening. You know, I will be the last person to stand, stake my claim and say, I can't wait to close schools and disrupt communities. Because if anything, our communities have been through so much disruption in the last four years. I wish there was another way, and I am willing to, you know, look around every corner and in every closet for every last spare dollar. But structurally, we just have a problem with our expenses, um, exponentially outpacing our revenue. And I'm all for figuring out ways to increase our enrollment in Minneapolis Public Schools. But like I said, when we have bare-bones programming and half-empty buildings, you know, that just can't support the robust programming that families are looking for and leaving our schools for, right? Like, so many families in District Six have left to cross the border to Edina Public Schools. And they've said, it's not that it's necessarily better, it's just they have five hundred kids in a building to support you know, the advanced learner coursework, or the arts programming, or the mental health professionals that each building requires. And when we have buildings that don't have enough students in them, and the boundaries are drawn so that we, there's not more kids to draw from, like, to me, it's like, what is, what is the path forward there? And that's where, if school closures and consolidations are part of this transformation plan, we've got to be talking to the community ahead of time at every step of the way. Because the biggest criticism I've heard of the CDD was that families were told last minute and they were told their kids would be fine and their concerns were dismissed. And that alienated our community. And we can't risk doing that again, because we saw what happened after the CDD.
So I, I guess the, so the alternative charge might be, well, you're just, uh, sticking your head in the sand and you're, you're walking us down the road to a state takeover? Like, do you believe there's a candidate in, in this race who would do that? That would, that could be a countercharge. Because I get the feeling, talking to you both, that maybe you're not as far apart as, uh, the, the campaign whispers would indicate. Like, you're both responsible, smart people who are gonna look at things and probably not walk us into a disaster?
Yeah, well, I do think that there's this other piece too, around, around revenue, right? The, the underfunding from the state that I talked about. If we can miraculously organize for next session and get another historic infusion of cash from the state, that would help us as a district. My, my worry, though, is, you know, our projections are that enrollment will continue to steadily decline because we look at our incoming kindergarten classes to kind of do that long-term planning, right? And there's just fewer kids in our kindergarten classes when you look at census data and stuff like that. But, um, I just worry that it's a, you know, if that doesn't happen at the state level, like, what, what is the plan for us as a district? And again, that eighty-five million dollar deficit, and that's an unaudited number. So it could be more, could be less, it's probably not less. That is to maintain the system as we have it. So what if we are to make adjustments to our budget and then get state infusion? Then we can use those state dollars to start, like, rebuilding. But right now, we're really, really toeing the line of like, that point of, of no return. And, and when I talk to people on the campaign trail, like, they're concerned whether they have kids in the school or not. Like, people who keep sending their tax dollars to Minneapolis Public Schools are like, why do I keep hearing about these deficits, right? The, the legislators that are, were really proud of their historic investment during the twenty twenty-three session in public education, they're like, wait, we just heard from your teachers' union that Minneapolis had enough money to pay for all these things, right? So like, like, the math doesn't make sense here. And I think that's, you know, because we, again, haven't been really honest with how quickly things can, you know, go into really scary territory for our, our schools. And you know, that's the other thing at the end of the day, these are real people's lives. These are families and children and educators. This is the lifeblood of our city. And, um, I agree with my opponent, we need to do everything we can to make sure that Minneapolis Public Schools are around for the long run. And I just think that the community is ready for a, an honest conversation about what it's gonna take to, to get there.
So I wanna thank you for bringing, uh, to light another attack on you, which I was not aware of, the charter school thing. I'm gonna ask you to, uh, please address the charges I was not previously, previously aware of. That you are secretly connected to charter schools, you are under, you're gonna be the enemy within. You're gonna undermine Minneapolis Public Schools. Tell me how that's not the case. Pro- prove that you are innocent.
Well, um, I wouldn't be working this hard for a job that is as thankless as it is if my, my goal was to undermine our public schools. That logic in itself just doesn't make sense. I would say, you know, this was fresh on my mind because I just heard from a voter who I've exchanged a couple emails with over the last few months saying that they had, um, a canvasser come to the door this weekend and say that they, you know, the biggest difference between me and my opponent was that I support school vouchers. And could I explain that? And I, I said, I honestly don't know what to say because it could not be further from the truth. I believe in public education and I am invested in, um, doing all the things that we need to do to make sure that our schools live up to their promise. And I would say the sort of parallel to school vouchers and is the, the conversation around charter schools. And, you know, again, I am running for the board of Minneapolis Public Schools. And I've been asked, like, would you consider selling empty buildings to charter? And I've been asked, like, would you consider selling empty buildings to charter schools? And my answer is the last thing that we need in this city is more schools, right? Like we can't even maintain the ones we have. And, and I'm, I'm a big proponent of making sure that our public service of education is accessible to everyone, that it is equitable, that is addressing the very real disparities for our students of color. Um, and as the Star Tribune article illuminated, most charter schools aren't doing any better. And so like, it just, it doesn't make sense to me, like why I would somehow secretly have another agenda. Um, I think, you know, some of my supporters have affiliations with organizations. This is something that we talked about briefly at Open Streets, right? And it's like, everyone who's supporting me knows exactly where I stand. And that doesn't necessarily mean they agree with me, right? Like I am nobody's puppet and um, have said from the beginning, I'm beholden to no one except our kids and getting them the very best education that Minneapolis Public Schools can offer.
If my secret agenda was to destroy Minneapolis Public Schools, I would not get involved. I would stand back, stand far away and just let it unfold. That would be my strategy. I wouldn't actually run.
That's another point, right? Well, and this is the other thing too, like I'm a proud public school alumni of Minneapolis, right? Like my years in our schools were way more formative than any, you know, college or graduate school that I've had. They were foundational to the human I am today. And I have two kids in the schools that I hope are Minneapolis Public Schools graduate as well, right? Like, um, I, I just, I think that this binary thinking that exists in, in education um, is really damaging, um, because in, it kind of poses like winners and losers. And at the end of the day, like it's our kids that are losing when we have adults that can't come together and sit in shared spaces and have disagreements, but like ultimately move forward together. Um, and, and again, I, I think that that goes with the role of board director too. I'm gonna be one of nine people tasked with the governance of, of these schools. And so I might have some good ideas that are different than another board director's good ideas. So, you know, I'm gonna listen to those ideas too. Even if I don't agree with them, um, because I think that's the work of good governance and um, again, building consensus and bringing along as many people as possible and getting that buy-in for like the vision that we're creating together. Um, sometimes just like listening to the people you disagree with can go a long way.
So let's set the true and accurate contrast because that's what people, people want the bottom line. What is the difference between these two candidates? Answer it for him. Like what, what is the difference? Why you and not Greta?
Yeah, um, I mean, I kind of go back to like what my priorities are and top of my list is literacy. I don't know if we're gonna have time to go into that conversation, but you know, our um, FastBridge scores are being presented to the school board right now as we speak. Um, but I, I looked ahead, I peeked at their agenda materials and you know, these sort of periodic assessments we do of children's growth throughout the year, they do it in the fall, winter and spring, so they can kind of see how kids are progressing. They show that we're actually losing ground. And for me, as an early childhood educator, I know that those literacy skills are foundational to all other learning and like success in life. Um, and we have a very real problem in Minneapolis Public School and a really big part of that is the curriculum we're using. Um, and so I am a fierce advocate for getting in that now state mandated um, evidence-based um, curriculum for teachers. Uh, a lot of our teachers right now are going through something called letters training. So that's, that's different than the curriculum. That's sort of the why behind the tool, the how. Um, and um, so we have to have that curriculum in place. We have to support our teachers in getting trained on it, feeling confident in using it, believing that this is gonna finally move the needle on our literacy um, outcomes for students. Um, and then we need to talk about things like the fact that so many of our schools don't have full-time librarians. That, you know, we, we, we have not created literacy-rich curriculums and or environments. And we know that the things that make up that and a curriculum is really um, critical to that. And you know, just based on public forums that myself and Greta have had, um, I feel like she sort of dismisses it as the next big fad when research continues to show the importance of having, you know, sort of that structured approach to teaching reading. It's how our brains learn to read. And the science has been clear on that for, for decades. Um, but it's just been in recent years that states like Minnesota have taken it up because districts weren't um, doing it for themselves. So, um, that's a big difference is like I'm laser focused on that. Um, I also bring in early childhood expertise and um, I have fifteen years, over fifteen years working in, in classrooms, but also, you know, time at the Department of Human Services and as an advocate at the state. And so I know a lot of exciting things happening in Minnesota in early childhood. And it really is a moment that MPS could lead and we should, we could sort of differentiate ourselves from other districts um, by making these investments and expanding our early childhood. Um, that's early childhood special ed, that's ECFE or family education, that's um, uh, early childhood screeners. There's a whole thing that goes under that umbrella. That's not just like high five or our like public pre-K programming that we do. Um, and because we know that's good for kids, the research continues to show how important that foundation is for kids later learning. But it's also a smart enrollment strategy, right? So like, I'm like, great, two birds, one stone, right? So let's put in the time and look at that. And I think that, that does, that is one place. Well, I, I will claim to be the one who has some expertise in early childhood when we're talking about it um, strategically as a board. So I would be more than eager and happy to elevate that. Um, and so, yeah, those are the two big differences in in addition to sort of our different understandings of, you know, how to get our budget, how to get our budget on a sustainable path. So it's nuanced, it's nuanced. And when people really do their research, which I trust people will, you know, at the end of the day, I, I think we have a very smart population here in Minneapolis and um, I'm just available to meet people where they're at and sort of, you know, demonstrate the kind of leader I would be too.
I have let this episode get away from me, so.
I'm so sorry. I'm a long-winded person. My campaign manager would be.
Hey, it's your loss if people stop listening at thirty-five minutes.
Well, hopefully I brought some energy and some new ideas after all of your interviews with us.
We're still going. I'm not saying we're done. Don't, don't misinterpret this to mean we're done. I have reader questions to get through and I can't disappoint my readers who took the time to submit these questions. Just uh, you know, we're gonna have to struggle to not crack fifty minutes on this. Do it. So would you vote, and these are gonna be very complex questions. You're gonna be tempted to give very long answers to. Would you vote for the CDD today?
Oh goodness. Yeah, that's the, that's another big question.
Short answers only.
Um, you know, I think it's easy to look back and say, knowing what we know now, like no one would vote for it, right? Like I can, I can say that. Um, I think what's important to remember though is before the CDD, it was not all sunshine and rainbows in Minneapolis Public Schools. It's not like some make America great again, like it, we were struggling. We, we have one of the most segregated school systems in the country, some of the worst disparities between our black and brown kids and white kids in the country. Um, and you know, so I don't think the answer is to not do anything and the CDD was attempted at doing something. It just, I think was, you know, kind of doomed from the outset because it, it was, you know, pushed through during a pandemic. Um, and without the sort of ah, consensus building and buy-in with the community that just takes time, right? And um, so you know, I can only kind of look forward as I look at like school transformation and say, we learned some really important lessons. We better not forget. Um, as we, as we do school transformation and um, we better, we better learn from those mistakes.
Uh, I've asked this question to all the candidates, uh, as with most of these, and I'm not, I don't think it's a very good question because it sounds like the school district has a handle on cell phone policy.
You know, we passed a policy like ten years ago. And um, what I've heard from schools this fall is that we're just enforcing it now, right? Like we didn't change the policy, but now people are aware what the policy is and it, it had some good bones to it. So, you know, now we're seeing, um, I was talking to an educator that said this is the smoothest start to the school year um, in their memory because we were really clear from the beginning about um, what our policy and expectation was around cell phones. Um, so yeah, I mean, I know that was a big topic um, a few months ago, but it seems like it's going well.
Okay, that's good to hear. How would you work to create safe routes for walking and biking to school, encouraging students to travel independently? While reducing the heavy car traffic and chaotic parent drop-off. There's a mental health aspect to this question, like it's important for kids to travel independently is the, the premise of the question. Learn some independence.
Yeah, absolutely. Um, I'm a Montessori-trained educator, so I don't know if you know much about Montessori, but um, empowering children at very young ages to work and, and kind of act independently is really central to that philosophy. But um, you know, I think that um, this move that the CDD made towards more neighborhood schools, um, lets us take a closer look at, at how safe those routes are. Um, actually, just in my neighborhood last week, we finally got a crosswalk signs and lines painted um, to cross Penn Avenue, which is a very busy main drag down where I live. And um, now that Armitage is drawing more kids from that side of Penn Avenue, we have a lot of crossing, especially during that morning and afternoon time that, you know, it took years of me leading the community to get that installed with the city. Um, and you know, has been on the minds of neighbors for decades. So I think it just illustrated for me the importance of partnership with our other like our city partners, our county partners. It took forever to just figure out who was in charge of that strip of road, right? Is it the county? Is it the city? Is it the park board? Um, and so we really need collaboration and to be talking to each other so that we can get those things addressed as quickly as possible. Cause it is um, yeah, we're, we're not comfortable sending our kids across a busy street without a crosswalk, right? Like we have to be thinking about that when we have those hopes for our children's independence.
Here's a question about disabled students and uh, becoming more inclusive. My son is autistic and he is supposed to be in the least restrictive environment per federal, federal policy, which we can think of as being the most normalized and mainstreamed environment for his classes and school experience, but often even with the most well-intentioned teachers and staff, his experience has been separate from the vast majority of his similar age peers, even when in the same school, sometimes in the same classroom. This became and becomes especially glaring once a disabled student enters high school. What are your thoughts on having an inclusive school experience for everyone compared to the current system that seems to put students into narrow lanes?
Yeah, yeah, I think that this is something I've learned a lot from Director Emmerich about as, you know, they've led work in um, the develop, uh, the disabled community forever as an advocate. And um, I, I, I support, you know, that least restrictive environment thing. I think to operationalize it though, takes a lot of time and sort of disrupting the status quo, which oftentimes is politically, and I'm not talking about like voting, but like in terms of the minds of people, hard to do sometimes, but um, there's a really beautiful documentary, I believe it's called Forget Me Not. And it's about a, a family's um, uh, search for an inclusive early childhood program for their son who has Down Syndrome and they, they go visit some really incredible schools, public schools that are doing like inclusive education really well. Um, so it shows us that it's possible. It just takes some willpower.
I'm gonna put my own spin on this question. It's about dealing with many passionate stakeholders. So students, parents, teachers, the union administrators. And so one of the strengths Greta uh, listed about herself was teachers' union president, when she tells teachers something, a hard truth uh, that she gets from the administration about, I, I don't know, uh, the budget, for example, or something else, like they will believe her, they will trust her. Like that, that trust is there. Obviously the teachers are a big, important, powerful constituency. So like, uh, how, how will you build that trust? Like how, how are you? Like, uh, is that a disadvantage for you? How, how will you uh, how will you deal with that?
Are we talking specifically with our teachers or educators? Because that is um, something I've wrestled with from the very beginning. Um, as soon as I learned that Greta was also running for this seat, um, because I'm an educator and I understand what it's like to not have your voice heard in early childhood. We don't have union representation. We don't have benefits and protected prep time. And so I get it. Um, and I wanna represent educators well because I understand that they are critical to having strong thriving schools. Um, but there, there has been this reluctance from a lot of educators um, to even have a conversation with me. And I think it goes back to like that fear of you know, crossing the line. And um, I, I think that's really hard um, for people. Um, cause I'm really not that scary. And I, if I'm gonna do this job well, I need to hear from you. Um, but I will also say I do have Minneapolis Public School teachers supporting me and have shared with me that, you know, even the union with its thousands and thousands of members isn't a monolith, right? Like um, they uh, they have differences of thought and um, you know, I think it just oversimplifies it to say like, because I, you know, was elected by this body, which is not usually the full membership participating in that election, um, that I alone can speak for them. Um, because I have educators in my, that support me in my campaign that say she doesn't represent me well. Um, I felt like she hasn't listened to their voices. So, um, I don't know. I, all I can do, you know, is keep showing up and commit to listening and following through. I really believe that trust has to be has to be earned. And the best way I know how to do that is to just be relentless in, in my commitment to showing up and, and listening. Um, and hopefully my actions will speak for themselves.
We did it. We got through all the hard questions. And now for the easy question. Do you have anything to recommend to the audience? Uh, something, a hobby, uh, something you enjoy, a piece of entertainment? A place you like to go to? What, what can people, uh, what should people be experiencing?
So many things. Um, I would say this unseasonable weather gives us an extended opportunity to not just get outside, but like kick your shoes off and walk barefoot through the grass, right? Like that I feel like is so grounding and in Minneapolis where we have so many beautiful green spaces, like we should take advantage of that at every point. But if I'm thinking ahead to the deep dark depths of winter and a post-election day, who knows? Um, I would just have people find, go find the art that speaks to you, whether it's a TV show or a book or a hobby, like art is what helped us get through the pandemic and, you know, it's always there. My um, my preferred uh, medium is writing. So I love to journal. And I think just slowing down and giving ourselves time to sit in stillness is really important and just reconnecting with ourselves. So that's what I'll leave you with.
Where, where do you go to walk barefoot?
Oh gosh, you can do it anywhere. You, like, it's, it's transformative. You could go to a park and like.
Recommendation though, I want to know where is a good place.
Well, I live really close to uh, like Harriet. And so all of the green space over by the Rose Gardens and the Rock Garden and the Peace Garden, you know, there's so many. You know, there's so many cool textures to walk in. I mean, some folks might have sensitive feet and not like that. But I think it just, it's just, it feels good.
You know what I get irritated by is going barefoot on Minneapolis beaches. I, I'm originally, I don't like to admit this, I'm originally a Florida guy. I'm Florida, Florida man. I guess it's how you should refer to me as Florida man. Beaches are so gritty and rocky and uncomfortable. And then you, I visited my mom last year. I go to the beach. Oh, it's so nice. It's soft. It's just, it's so hot though. That's the only problem with the Florida beach. It's just so hot on the sand.
Can't be too Goldilocks about it. I lived a year in Phuket, Thailand, some of the most gorgeous beaches in the world. And then my husband's from Hawaii, so we get to go back and see those beaches. So I hear you on what you're talking about. The Minnesota lakes beaches are, they shouldn't even be in the same category. And yet, they still, they still make you feel alive. That sensation of discomfort or of like ickiness, like when else are you gonna get that?
Yeah, you, you go home and you're like, did I catch a brain eating amoeba?
Go in the water. I think the last time I swam in a Minneapolis lake, I did end up getting whatever like rash thing and I was like. And I grew up, I grew up swimming in these lakes, so. I get it. No, it's not, it's not for everyone.
Well, thank you for joining me. We did crack fifty minutes and I'm gonna get charges of bias cause I gave you fifty minutes. Don't worry, no one listens to podcasts anymore. There's.
My kids are gonna wanna see this.
Please, subject your kid to fifty-two minutes of the Wedge Live. They're gonna be big fans. I'll have to mark this video as safe for kids on YouTube.
And I'm glad I didn't end up swearing because sometimes I do that too. I guess they're used to that.
Laura Bergman is running for Minneapolis School Board in District Six. Thank you for being here.
Thank you. Thanks so much, John.
The election is November fifth. I'm your host, John Edwards. This has been the Wedge Live Podcast. Thank you for listening.